So hello, everyone. It's Election Day in the United States of America, and I hope you've each done your civic, taken your civic responsibility seriously and voted. Moving forward today, we are live captioning our meeting, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a page with the live captioning. I'd also like this evening to welcome Dr. Richard Danielle, our newest president of South Mountain Community College. And we'll welcome you in person when we convene on November 22nd, Dr. Danielle. And I believe, Dr. Laura, you are with us this evening, and we had you join us at the last board meeting, but wanted to welcome you as well to our community. With that, at this time, I call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of November 8, 2022. I'd like to call roll of board members at this time. I would like to start with Mr. Burnett, our student trustee. Are you present? Moving on, Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
I'm here.
Great. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? I understand, I believe she's not joining us this evening. And with my presence, we have six board members present this evening, one absent, and our student trustee also not in attendance. So today, as we move into our work session, we're going to hear a report regarding staff policy collaboration, team overview, and proposed policies. There's no action to be taken at this time. This is strictly a work session. I believe there is a song that will start us off once Dr. Gonzalez introduces our presenter. So would you do that, please?
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan and members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to bring some information before you as we, you know, are constantly taking a look at our policies and procedures across the system. So I didn't catch the names of the presenters, unfortunately, because I know that Dr. Kelly is out this evening. So I'm just going to turn it over to them. My apologies for not catching your names before this.
That is okay. Dr. Gonzalez, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Stacy Smith, and I am here today as the co-chair of the Staff Policy Collaboration Team, joined by Josh Moss. And we're going to be talking about some of the proposed policies. But before we get there, President Sullivan, you asked about a song, and the first song that I think is appropriate for today that popped in my head was "We Shall Overcome" by Mahalia Jackson, which many people feel was kind of the anthem of the civil rights movement. So we will see what happens at the polls. And that song, since I was growing up, was always played around our house. So that's the first one that popped in my head.
Mahalia Jackson did not write that song.
She did not, but I believe it was Paul, I don't remember his name. You are, that is exactly what I read in the history. She did not write the song, but her rendition's the one that we listened to.
Thank you. So we look forward to your presentation this evening.
Okay. Elsie, are you going to be able to pull up the presentation? Thank you. All right. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide. And Josh and I will be kind of taking turns looking at the different policies that are proposed. And you can see the five there. So we're going to start with the brief overview of SBCT. And I'm sure everyone's aware of the group. Just wanted to make sure we highlighted the collaboration and socialization that happens throughout the SBCT process and what happened for the five policies that are proposed. Then we're going to look at some highlights of the changes that are proposed, the rationale, some research to support the changes and the costs involved, and then look at next steps. Next slide, please. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Josh to go over the SBCT overview.
Awesome. Thank you, Stacy. Again, President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Josh, and I am presenting today as additionally one of the tri-chairs of the Staff Policy Collaboration Team. This slide is talking a lot about our process and how our team approaches policy when it is brought to us. One of the pillars of this really was to ensure collaboration was at the forefront. And so our role is to advance various proposals that are brought to us. We do not develop policies from the ground up. We allow them to be brought to us either from staff representation, human resources, sometimes state and federal regulations call for action. And so our job is to make sure that we really analyze those policies and make informed decisions comparing to like institution, best practices, so on and so forth. From there, we socialize it out to various stakeholders, staff representation, college HR groups, district HR groups, diversity, equity, and inclusion groups, of course, our president's councils, the VP councils. We even have some faculty information groups there as well to help guide us in our work. And we make sure that this really gets out to also, when needed, of course, legal, EEO, ADA, and other various stakeholders that really need to give us their guidance. And this really helps us create a process of true collaboration. So that way, by the time we bring policy to you here at the governing board, you know that it has been vetted, or you can trust that it has been vetted through the proper channels. And the most important piece is that we make sure, of course, we have the chancellor himself and his executive cabinet review these policies before we bring them to you. And so far, it has been extremely productive, and it has really shown us the power of getting all the voices at the table from the get-go. So we're really excited to share what work has come out of this process. Next slide, please. Okay. So we're bringing to you today our three updated leave's policy proposals. This was brought forward by the Staff Representation Group, and it was an effort to extend what we call the Care Amendment. It's the ability to extend the definition of family member as that idea and term and philosophy has really grown over the years. On the left side, you'll see what is the current language currently in the policy, policies, I should say, B1, B2, and B4. And on the right is what we are proposing, the updated language. Now, what we are really fortunate to meet with this is that when staff representation brought this policy forward to the collaboration team, we actually were able to align the definition of family member with the desire of this and the interests of the institutions with Arizona State Revice Statute 23371, which already has a definition. You can see the details there. One of the big important things that we wanted to really extend this out is being inclusive of especially our Indigenous and our LGBTQ staff. And we can see in number five that this allows individuals to use especially their sick leave to care for any other individual related by blood or affinity whose close association with an employee is the equivalent of a family relationship. This is what the state currently defies of a family member, and this will allow Maricopa to also align its policies with that as well. Next slide, please. In this slide here, you can see a little bit of what I was talking about. Again, the rationale aligning with that state statute, really the increased coverage for employees to really care for those who are very near and dear to them. We really, of course, saw this become extremely prevalent in the unfortunate years previous to these of the pandemic. And we also want to make sure that we're providing competitive benefit that can really help maintain retention or increase retention and employee morale. And you can see some of the details here around the research for this. We saw that there was an updated to the definition of family member for the U.S. Office of Personnel Management, and it's very consistent with policy across the federal government. And we saw that that, as a result, led to the state of Arizona updating its definition as well. Additionally, we see a lot of peer institutions, including those governed by the Board of Regents of Arizona, also have adhered to this definition as well. So this will really be helping us not only get in line but remain competitive as an employer as well. Next slide, please. So looking at the costs, when it comes to the various balances, we had to kind of look at these carefully. With sick leave, those are earned balances by employees. So at this time, and based upon research, we did not see any additional cost for the sick leave because those would be using the same balances already afforded to staff. When looking at catastrophic leave and bereavement leave, this one was something we had to be very careful about looking at. And so what we did is assess the amount of employees over the last four years that have either used bereavement leave or catastrophic leave annually, and including the pandemic years. On average, only 238 employees of all of Maricopa used one of these leaves, and the average was only eight hours taken per event per employee. Given the circumstances, we were really, really surprised to see what we believe such a low number. So we believe that the cost will actually be minimal. And then we also had to take a look at, you know, what are the costs for a replacement worker if a position has to be temporarily filled due to not having a policy that allows for this flexibility? And so that's something we had to consider as well. And then finally, for the set of policies or recommendations, I should say, we looked at the risk mitigation. What we plan on having is what we've always had and is reinforcing and encouraging the time limits and approval processes for bereavement and catastrophic that already exist, reinforcing the three-day medical leave justification requirements as permitted by state law for sick leave use, and then, of course, always encouraging staff, as needed, as appropriate, to look at their additional resources such as FMLA if more time is needed. Next slide, please. All right. So additionally, after leaves, we have gone and taken a look at both policies, C2 grievances and C4 discipline. First, we're going to take a look at C2 grievances. It's important to note that technically, by this policy, it only applies to our classified staff. But what we have done is really reinforced informal processes to allow for additional steps before having to go through a formal grievance process, such as interest-based negotiation. What we've also proposing is increasing the time limit for grievances to be filed from 15 days to 60 days to give the grievin' a more reasonable time to make their concerns known, understanding that circumstances that really lead to agreements can be difficult for a staff member to address. And this increased time limit also meets the interest of the various stakeholders when developing this recommendation. This is also similar to the faculty agreement in the recommendations that we are proposing, having support of a peer representative and making staff representation as a group available to staff as needed. Next slide, please. Looking at policy C4, which we are hoping to retitle to Progressive Discipline and Corrective Action. Similar to grievances, this does only apply to classified staff technically. We have worked in a few other mechanisms to make this more coachable and help staff, you know, out of a tough time and into better habits. And that includes written warnings are now considered a part of a coaching measure and no longer the initial stage of corrective action. We've introduced what is called the Letter of Reproman, and this is the first formal corrective action step that will be administered by the colleges. So again, what we've done is outlined some informal processes, and then again, restructured some of the formal processes, you know, should they ever unfortunately be needed. All decisions relating to any unpaid suspensions, demotions, or terminations are now to be, of course, made with human resources as they were before and are subjected to, subjected, sorry, subject to approval by the CHRO or designee. And that part is really important as well because it gives more latitude to move quickly through these processes by authorizing more individuals that are trusted to handle these situations. Similar to C2 as well, with the faculty agreement, this does allow for a peer representative, including staff representation, as needed. Next slide, please. And then a little bit of the rationale behind this, you know, we really wanted to provide employees an opportunity to comply with Maricopa or departmental requirements and to really help resolve workplace issues in alignment with, you know, performance management system, the big performance management system that we're seeing come. This is going to really help align with that work and help retain employees and, again, increase that employee morale. And again, as we're supporting district alignment with HLC accreditation, Criterion 1C5B, this is also going to really make sure that we are in alignment with expectations for our accreditation. Some of the research behind this progressive discipline policy specifically proposed revisions to mere state universities that do have similar processes as well for appropriate administrator or designees to make disciplined decisions. And for the grievance policy and its proposed revisions to mirror the state universities grievances as well, the state universities have a time limit of 30 days for grievances to be filed. And then the costs that we feel associated for this are really just a time cost for the designee, just having to dedicate time to make, you know, maybe some of these difficult decisions. And then, of course, any training for effective and equitable implementation, especially as we're training our staff and supervisors on how to, you know, manage these processes. Next slide, please, and I'll pass it off to Stacy.
Okay. So today, we're presenting you these five policies, and hopefully, we can move forward with the first read in November, second read in December, and if so graciously approved in the spring, we're going to have a rollout plan for implementation that includes socialization, town halls and conversations, creation of standard operating procedures so that we can have that equitable implementation across the district. And those are the five policies. We'll now open it up if anyone has any questions or thoughts about the materials that were provided.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Very thorough. Appreciate it. Board members, this is our opportunity to ask questions in the work session before it's brought to us for our first read at our board meeting on November 22nd. So let me just open it up generally. Does anyone have a question? I won't call your name. I won't go through the list. Just speak up, and we'll go that way. Whoa, deafening silence. So when you, you will bring this forward, as you noted in your timeline, for a first read on the 22nd, and we'll go ahead and with the second read and then move into approval after that. So appreciate your hard work and your dedication to thinking about the many issues that address the concerns of our staff and all of our employees. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments or questions or?
No comments or questions. I would echo your comment there, President Sullivan, and thanking Josh and Stacy. As they expressed, this is a, it's a lot of work to get to this place, a lot of socialization, a lot of thoughts and ideation go on behind it. So I appreciate the time and energy it's taken to get here. And, you know, hopefully, we get a favorable outcome. And if not, then we'll continue to work on it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And board members, this is your opportunity to ask the questions so that as we move through the reads, we'll be more and more informed if we need to be. So with that, thank you also for the song, Ms. Smith. That was very noteworthy for today, and appreciate that. And with that, I'm going to conclude our work session for the evening. Thank you again for your presentation. Group, I'm now going to move us to our agenda review. And I see it's up on the screen, if you have access to that. And so at this time, we've concluded the work session, and I'm going to call to order the Agenda Review Meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of November 8, 2022. Today, we are going to review the agenda for the November 22nd, 2022 board meeting. Again, for the record, I am going to call a roll of board members. Once again, we'd call to see if our student advisor, Mr. Burnett, is present. Are you there? Moving on, Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen is not with us this evening. With my presence, we have six board members present, one absent. Our student advisor is also not present with us this evening. So as we move into the agenda for November 22nd, you have the normal process moves us into a consideration of our consent agenda. I'll call each item and board members. I'll also call for your comments and questions after each one, noting that Item 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are approval of faculty and meritist distinctions. Item 7 will be approval of acceptance of a new subaward grant from Pennsylvania State University to Rio Salado College for years 1 and 2 of a four-year advanced technological education project from September 1, 2022 to August 31, 2024 in the amount of $204,969. Are there any comments or questions? Next, Item 8, approval of acceptance of a new grant from Strata Education Network to Rio Salado College for a three-year beyond completion challenge grant from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025 in the amount of $1,490,796. Are there any comments or questions? Item 9, approval to issue. Yes, go ahead, going back to Item 8.
Thank you, President Sullivan. As I did at our last Agenda Review, I complimented Chandler Gilbert Community College on their very significant grant awards. And I'd like to also acknowledge and congratulate Rio Salado.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Appreciate you doing that. Any other comments or questions on Item 8 and 7? Being then, we'll move to Item 9, approval to issue a purchase order to Field Turf USA, Inc. in the amount of $794,797 for the reconstruction of the running track at Phoenix College. Are there any comments or questions? Moving to Item 10, approval to issue a purchase order to Field Turf USA, Inc. in the amount of $963,213 for the reconstruction of the running track at Mesa Community College. Any comments or questions? Being then moving to Item 11, approval to issue a purchase order to Johnson Roofing LLC in the amount of $396,413 for the roof replacement at the Fitness and Wellness Building at Glendale Community College. Any comments or questions? Item 12, approval of expenditure of budgeted funds not to exceed $3,500,000 over three years for the replacement of network equipment at the District Support Service Center and Scottsdale Air Park Enterprise Data Centers and the 10 Maricopa Community College District Colleges. Any comments or questions? Item 13, approval to award IRFP 3510-6 for Employee Benefits Broker and Consulting Services to Alliance Insurance Services in the amount of $190,000 per year with a 3% increase in premium in year four for the period of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2027. Any comments or questions? Item 14, approval to renew stop-loss policy with Berkeley Life and Health Insurance Company for a renewal offer for a 12-month policy that decreases our exposure in premium. Are there any comments or questions? Item 15, approval of state university license agreements for use of office space at Maricopa Community Colleges by Arizona's universities. Any comments or questions? Item 16, approval of support for foreign trade zone designation for a magnet site at Copper Wing located at the northeast corner of Olive Avenue and Dyssart Road in El Mirage, Arizona. Do we have any comments or questions?
This is Ms. Smith. I'm having trouble pulling up the document. Can someone on the line just give me a couple sentences of explaining what a foreign trade zone is?
Sure. Dr. Gonzalez?
President Sullivan and Board Member Smith, I'm going to ask Ms. Kim Grenio, our Vice Chancellor for Business Services, to come on.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, Mrs. Smith, and President Sullivan. So FTZ or Foreign Trade Zone really is a situation where there are specific areas that entities can come in and get certain types of tax incentives or tax deferrals on property taxes. And so they're entities that typically cities and counties are trying to entice to come into those foreign trade zones that will allow them to become economic engines in many cases for some of these cities and towns. I hope that's helpful.
Yes. And if you don't mind, what will be the main benefit to Maricopa as a result of this designation?
President Sullivan, Mrs. Smith, I think that the primary benefit to Maricopa, well, there's a couple. So first of all, they're really looked at as generating economic benefits for really everyone in the community. So the county will benefit, the city will benefit. Certainly, our Community College District will benefit with having more jobs come into play for our communities. Where Maricopa can benefit, it's not necessarily, certainly not a required benefit, is that these are also opportunities for us to partner with those entities to create training programs if they bring in workers that need some sort of training or upskilling. That's where our Workforce Development Office comes into play, and we oftentimes connect with these companies to help work out any kind of training plans we can provide.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And President Sullivan, if I may weigh in, because Board Member Smith said that she's having a hard time bringing up this particular page. For this specific project, they anticipate the creation of 3,800 new jobs at full buildout with 13.5 million square feet of industrial warehouse space where it would be home to manufacturing, warehousing, e-commerce, distribution, and fulfillment operations. So it's very likely that these could be potential partners where we would provide the workforce training for employees going into this particular site.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your question. Moving to Item 17, approval of Proposition 301 Workforce Development and Job Training Reports for fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2122. Any comments or questions? Item 18, approval of curriculum deletions, new and modifications for courses. Deletion 34, new or four, modifications one. For occupational programs, we have 10 modifications, three new and two deletions. And that will conclude the consent agenda for November 22nd. Are there any comments or questions on that or any issues with the above? Being then, we have, at this point, we would move to the non-consent action items. There are a couple possibilities. One is the approval of sale of 61 square feet of land and establishment of drainage easement of 2,586 square feet to the city of Phoenix for drainage improvements along Happy Valley Road at Glendale North Campus in the amount of $17,301. And the other is approval of dedication of land to the city of Phoenix or Alta Vista Road on South Mountain Community College property located at 59th Avenue and Alta Vista Road. Are there any comments or questions from the board on either of these items? All right. Then we would move into a first read and information of our Employment and Separations Report and a first read of staff policy proposals regarding the bereavement leave, catastrophic illness imminent death leave, sick leave, grievance, and discipline as the workshops presented that information to us this evening. So are there any comments or questions on that? I also have noted that there may be a read on approval of a minimum wage increase as per Arizona Proposition 206, Arizona Fair Wages and Healthy Families Act effective January 1, 2023. So there is a possibility of that as a first read and more information. So be prepared just in case, but are there any comments or questions on that? We also will have the budget analysis report for Fund One, general unrestricted funds for four months ending October 31, 2022. Any comments or questions on that prior to our meeting on the 22nd? We will then, if not, then we will move into community linkage where governing board members have an opportunity to share some of their activities around current events. So board members, I think that's it. I want to reiterate that our next meeting is tomorrow, where we have a board retreat to look at the environmental scan and have a discussion of that prior to honing in on strategic priorities with everyone else for our strategic plan. And outside of that, our next meeting then would be November 22, 2022, barring anything unusual coming up in the meantime. On December 6, just mark your calendars now so we don't lose track, we will have a virtual agenda review. And I'm not sure if we will have the executive session regarding the litigation update. We'll wait and see. And on December 13, we do plan a work session around the budget at 5:30, and then will be followed by a regular board meeting. We also will have some acknowledgements at that meeting. So that will be in person at Rio Salado. And again, please mark your calendars for that. So unless there's any comments or questions from the board, open-ended question there. If not, I'm going to conclude this meeting and say we are adjourned at 5:03. So thank you again for the work session and for your presence this evening, everyone. Board members, we now move into an executive session. So as people leave our meeting this evening, please stay on the, connected through WebEx, and we'll get the clearance to move ahead with our executive session. Thank you, Elsie, and thank you, Jordan, for managing that. And good night, everyone, except board members.